Uh, Dr. Daley is not going to make it tonight. So he had something come up today and he won't be here. So hopefully, uh, hopefully Dr. Rigsby gets here and we'll move forward. But in the meantime, uh, since Dr. Daley was going to do the pledge, uh, Councilman Jendal has offered to jump in.
Want to please rise? Do I have to go down first? Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for our invitation, I'd like to echo some words by Mother Teresa in the very beginning. The fruit of silence is prayer, the fruit of prayer is faith, the fruit of faith is love, the fruit of love is service, the fruit of service is peace. May these words guide us in our decisions that we will be making today and how we live our lives.
Okay, for the formality, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
And Councilman Jendal, Councilman Leonard,
Here.
Mayor Duper.
Present.
And Councilman Rigsby and Councilman Daley are absent at this point, but we do have a forum. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, do we have any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
I do have a couple of requests, um, one, uh, well-known folks here, uh, one in the audience and a couple on Zoom. But I do believe these are related to agenda items later on in the meeting. So, unless it's an agenda item, if you have anything else you would like to speak about, right now is the opportunity for the public to participate. I see nobody in the audience not related to an agenda item. And I'm looking over at the IT folks to just make sure there's nobody on Zoom that's waving us down. Nope, no takers. Okay. Uh, we will deal with conflicts of interest if they arise. Other than that, we will move into scheduled item number one, which is a joint meeting of the City Council and Housing Authority regarding presentation of our audit report for fiscal year 2019-20.
So, Mr. Mayor, on this item, I would like Sonya to start and then introduce the, uh, our auditing firms. Maybe Brad can come up and, uh, present your, your finding.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, city staff, and members of the virtual audience and members of the audience here. This is Brad Willaber and Veronica Hern- uh,
Hernandez.
Hernandez, sorry about that. They work for Rogers, Anderson, Melody, and Scott, and they're our external auditors. They have reviewed our financial transactions and they would like to report on it right now, and then I will follow up with my own report.
Thank you.
Thank you very much and good evening. Mayor Duper and members of the City Council, it's our privilege to present to you the results of our audit of the fiscal year that ended June 30, 2020. Uh, I'm Brad Willaber and I was the partner on this audit engagement and I'm accompanied by my colleague Veronica Hernandez, who is the supervisor on this audit and really led the fieldwork and the team that did this audit. Uh, we worked with the city staff in a remote way this year due to the pandemic, uh, but they were very accommodating. So we do want to, uh, thank Sonia and Diana and their team for accommodating during this challenging time and providing us with all the information we needed to be able to accomplish this audit done in a remote way. So it's nice to be in front of you today, uh, to present the results of that. And just to let you know in advance, everything is great news and we're going to go through the presentation and let you know uh, what our responsibilities are and this opinion, uh, that we have given over the financial statements. And, uh, with that, I'm going to let hand this over to Veronica to do that presentation.
Good evening, everyone. So, we'll start with the city's responsibilities. Uh, the city's responsibilities are the financial position and the results of the operations and fairly in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles. The city adopts sound accounting policies and provides reasonable accounting estimates and establishes and maintain internal controls that prevent and detect fraud. Our responsibilities are to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatement, to examine on test basis evidence supporting those amounts and disclosures and assess accounting principles used, estimates made, and evaluate the overall financial statement presentation. We review the city's internal control policies and procedures and ultimately express an opinion over the financial statements. Our opinion is that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. All significant accounting policies have been consistently applied. Estimates appear reasonable and disclosures have been properly reflected. Other key points to, to notice is that there was no disagreements with management, no material errors or irregularities discovered, and no significant accounting issues discovered. So that concludes our presentation.
So we're, we're just going to, um, pass this back to Sonia who has another presentation that'll get into more detail. We did meet with the Finance Committee meeting, uh, directly before this council meeting and, uh, went in more detail over the financial statements and answered some questions and so forth. But just to let you know, everything from our perspective is looking good at the city. The city is in a good financial position. And, uh, you can rely on the information that you've been receiving from your finance department. We've done our audit procedures and, uh, it is reliable information. So with that, I'm going to pass it back to Sonia. And if you have any further questions for us uh, from the audit perspective, uh, we'll be more than happy to come and address you for that.
Brad, before you go, can you please explain to the council the award that we received?
Oh, thank you.
For our audit, I mean for our financial report, please?
Thank you. I appreciate that. Uh, I like to, um, take this opportunity to, to make sure that we don't pass by too fast because Sonia, uh, presented this in her financial presentation to the Finance Committee. But there is a, a GFOA, which is a Government Finance Officers Association. It's the National Association of Finance Officers, uh, for the whole United States. And your city has submitted this, uh, report, this comprehensive annual financial report a number of years in a row, including, uh, this year will be submitting it again, but it's included in that CAFR report that you have received, this GFOA Certificate of Financial Excellence in Reporting. And that's not something that we'd like to just, uh, blow by, but, um, to really recognize that and say, this is, um, showing that your financial reporting to your constituents is at the highest level. This is, um, basically peer-reviewed by others in the profession that work in government and work in professions like mine in public accounting and have looked over this report and have given their stamp of approval saying that, um, you have met all the requirements at the, to have all the, um, financial statements presented in, in basically the most comprehensive way. So that's, uh, congratulations to your team who have, who have put together a fantastic financial report that has all the information um, that's required and that will give you a really good indication of how the city has performed over the last year.
Uh, Brad, can I ask you, and that's a national?
Yes, that's correct. That's right. That's a, I'm not sure how to answer that question because I don't have statistics on that. Uh, it is voluntary to participate in this. Um, if we look at the number of clients that we serve and that I know that our peers serve, it's probably maybe a quarter of, of the entities will go for this. Um, certainly the bigger entities, counties and cities like to go for this because they have a lot more information to share than the smaller districts. Uh, but we know that there's a number of cities, we work with some as well, that don't even go for this award. It's quite a bit of extra work to do it. There's a lot of statistical information. There's a lot, uh, more, um, like common language explanation through a transmittal letter of the finance and city manager's department about like what's happened and why it's happening and things like that.
Okay, thank you very much.
We'll wait while we, while Sonia goes through the presentation in case there's any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have before you copies of the city's 2020 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and I'll be referring to it as a CAFR from here on out. The presentation will go over the financial statements of the city. The report is made up of three major sections that include the introductory, financial, and statistical. The introductory section includes a transmittal letter that highlights the city's profile, significant events and accomplishments. It includes the Government Finance Officers Association Award, which we've received for 15 years, a list of principal officers in place during the fiscal year 2020, and an organizational chart. Financial section includes the auditor's report, management's discussion and analysis, the financial statements, notes, required supplementary information, and supplementary information that compares budget to actual for each governmental fund. And finally, the statistical section that includes financial trends, revenue and debt capacity, demographic, economic information, and operating information. The financial statements include the city, the Loma Linda Housing Authority, and the Successor Agency, which is a private purpose trust fund. The financial presentation of the governmental funds include funds at their modified accrual basis of accounting and the government-wide statements, which means taking the fund financial and converting them to full accrual basis of accounting to report the city as a whole and give a comparable view of the enterprise funds that are, that are also run at a full accrual. Next, we will show a recap of the more important sections of the statements. This is the government-wide full accrual section. These numbers are shown in detail on page 17 and 18 in the Statement of Activities. The ending net position includes a net change in position of 2.1 million for the governmental funds and 270,000 for the business-type activities, netting an almost 2.4 million change and bringing the net position of the city to 137 million. The net, net position of governmental activities totaled 109.7 million and 27.7 million for the business-type activities. As shown in the previous slide, the total change in net position for the governmental activities was a positive 2.1 million due to program and general revenues being more than program expenditures. The business-type activities had an excess in revenue over expenses and therefore causing the change in net position to be a positive 269,805 dollars. In February 2020, an additional payment was approved by City Council in the amount of 2 million for the governmental portion and 578,000 for the enterprise portion. These payments made for the measure, made after the measurement date of June 30, 2019 are reclassified as deferred at flow of resources in the CAFR. And these payments were, uh, made to purse for unfund, for unfunded liability. A detailed explanation of what makes up these changes is shown in the Management Discussion Analysis in page seven through 10. Continuing on to the Statement of Activities, CAFR page 17 through 18, this statement provides an overall picture of resources needed to run the city by the type of activities involved. Governmental activities include general government, public safety, community development, public works, and debt service. For fiscal year 2020, the total cost for these activities was 28.6 million and after applying program revenues such as charges for services, operating, and capital contributions of 12.7 million, the remaining 15.9 million was subsidized by the general revenues such as property, sales, transient occupancy, business license, motor vehicle and lieu, and other taxes, as well as investment and miscellaneous revenue. Business-type activities include water acquisition, water enterprise sewer, and Loma Linda connected communities. The cost to run the business-type activities was 13.3 million and are offset by the changes for services, I'm sorry, charges for services being collected for these activities, leaving a net cost of 437,000. That was subsidized by investment revenue and miscellaneous revenue, which is primarily refunds and reimbursements. In total, there is positive net change of almost 2.4 million. The change in net position for the city is higher than 2019 by almost 1.5 million. This slide shows the general fund balance classifications. Total fund balance increased by one, almost 1.3 million. As previously mentioned, an additional payment was approved by City Council in February 2020 of $2 million to kill purse for the city's unfunded obligation and was paid from unassigned fund balance. The general fund had revenues of 19.8 million, expenditures of 21.8 million, as well as other financing sources of 664,671 dollars. Fund balance decrease of 1 point, I'm sorry, 1,279,376. The expanded information to this slide can be seen on page 23 and 24 of the CAFR. This is a summary of general fund budgetary comparison as seen on this slide. The original budgeted expenditures are decreased through budget adjustments either at mid-year or throughout the year by 240,800. However, there was a savings in overall expenditures of 1.2 million. Conservative spending citywide with savings and personnel from the reimbursement of administrative costs from the successor agency, professional contractual services, repairs and maintenance, and utilities. The expanded version of this is shown on page 86 on the CAFR. As seen here, the change in net position, which is the end result of operations from business-type funds, was a positive 270,000, which is made up of positive changes for the water enterprise and sewer capital and negative changes for the water acquisition and the Loma Linda connected, connected communities. Water acquisition had decreased, the decreases were mainly due to the capital outlay expenses related to water line improvements in very, in various locations and fiber optic installation for the SCADA system. The decrease in Loma Linda connected communities is due to the continued lack of revenue to offset the accruing interest on the loans owed to the successor agency. The water enterprise ended with the positive change in net position of 530,556 as a result of ongoing operations, I'm sorry, ongoing operating expenses exceeding operating revenues offset by transfers in, for capital contributions from water acquisition. The sewer capital had 555,000 more revenues and expenditures than expenses, therefore causing a positive 559,000 change in net position for, from operations. The statements for the proprietary funds can be found on pages 27 and 28 of the CAFR. This is the statement of, for the successor agency and it can be found on page 32 of the CAFR. The net position for the successor agency increased by almost 3.2 million mainly due to a 3.7 million long-term debt repayment. The statement of changes in fiduciary net position can be found on page 33 of the CAFR. The successor agency had 3.9 million in property taxes for 2020 fiscal year through the recog, through the recognized obligation payment schedule process. The deductions incurred of almost 1.3 million were for general and administrative charges as well as interest charges on long-term debt such as bonds and loans from the city. And this concludes our presentation and we would like to thank everybody in the finance department for, um, helping to put this CAFR together and particularly to the departments because there's a lot of statistical information that was put into this report and we wouldn't have been able to do it without their help. And thank you to Diana for her awesome guidance.
Well, she went through it so fast that I wanted to point out a couple of important items. First of all, uh, thank you, our staff for preparing this report and, and Brad and, and, uh,
Veronica.
Veronica, for helping us with the audit. Um, I want to point out that this past two year, 2019 and 2020, we paid out our unfunded liability by 11 million dollars. So, and that is, is a big chunk of our unfunded liability. So right now, we, we owe about 7 million dollars left in our unfunded liability. Also, if you subtract our last fiscal year revenue and expenditures, we end the year with a, a positive or surplus of 964,053 dollars. So that's, that's very good things. And at the beginning, what I like to do is, is I would like to go ahead and, and pay down our unfunded liability by about another million dollars. But I went over that with Diana and she gave me a little caution. I said, hey, just due to the cash flow and, and you just never know if the second round of COVID-19 is going to come back. So she recommended that maybe we wait until the December to see if everything is normal, our, our cash flow is okay, then by December, we should pay down our unfunded liability by a million dollars. So with, with 7 million dollars that we have left right now at the interest rate of seven and a quarter percent, just the interest alone is, is close to half a million dollars a year. So the goal is, is to, to slowly, uh, pay down our debt. So that's my plan.
I, I think it's important, uh, in our meeting we had prior to this, um, our auditors were, were talking about that. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but had you said something like, if, if you're a city and you've got 85% compliance with your unfunded liability, you're in a very, very good position and we're in the 90s, right? 90? 87, 87%. So, um, we're obviously doing very well and I, I appreciate, I think all the council appreciates the goal to get to zero. Um, but it should be noted that we're far ahead of most everybody else, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that, that's, uh, that's it as far as this?
That's, that's how our audit go. And then later on, we have a media budget to, to show you where we're at right now.
Well, we got a, I want to thank Sonia for an excellent presentation. Thank you very, very much. Uh, thank you to our auditing team uh, for everything you guys have put into this and working with our staff. And we will see you again next year, I'm sure. And it should be noted, uh, I think what we're talking about finances, that we maybe have a pending retirement or something going on? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm blowing it. Um, anyway, we, we truly appreciate our, our finance folks here and you guys do a fabulous job and, and, or you guys are the reason that we are able to do the things we do as a city. So thank you so much. Okay, moving on to item number two will be a public hearing on our annual, uh, CD, CDBG, um, block grant, uh, disbursement. Uh, so we will open the, uh, public hearing with a presentation from the city manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just like every year, we have, we receive a Community Development Block Grant or CDBG, uh, from the county and the county receive it from the, the federal, had, uh, funding. So for next fiscal year, we will receive about 150,000 dollars, uh, which 15% can be used for the public services projects. And, and like every year, staff have recommended three agency, uh, to be provided this, uh, public services funding. And the first one is San Antonio County Library, which is next door to us. Uh, next is for 10,000 dollars. Next is our inland temporary home for 10,000 dollars. And next is our Family Services Association, Do Business As FSA. That's the group that provide, uh, senior luncheon at our senior center. That's total 30,000 dollars. So the remaining 160, 120,000 dollars, we plan to use that funding for remove and replace existing access ramp and sidewalk at adverse location. So staff recommend that the, the city council approve the allocation as recommended by staff. And we have, uh, three different agencies are here to, to give us an update, to give an update on, on their operation. Thank you.
Yes, so I have a request to speak, um, and we'll take an order of those who are here present. Uh, Mr. Sewell, uh, from next door at the library. It's good to see you again, sir. Um, and I, I think we have, we've probably pretty much done the same thing for the last 11 years that I've been on the council, so.
I, I do thank the council for their support and, um, I've been doing this for 20 years and so I've been, uh, coming and visit you folks, um, on a regular basis, but, my name is Stan Sewell. I'm the branch manager across the way at the Loma Linda Branch Library. Our address is 25581 Barton Road. And, uh, yes, I would like to thank the mayor, city council, and the staff for their support of library services and literacy in the community. This last year has been, uh, a change for all of us, um, and it did impact our program. Uh, what we have done is adapted, uh, what we offer. Um, so we now have tablets available loaded with educational materials, um, preloaded that they can check out. And we also have distance learning and distance tutoring available. So they don't have to meet in the library, but they can do it, um, in a telepresence way. And I extend an invitation to those, um, here and throughout the community to come and check us out at the library. We've done a lot of changes since we closed and reopened and, um, we've made it safer for the community and offered, uh, a number of more programs, uh, for the, the visitors, including, um, self-service, um, printing, self-service scanning, and a number of other things. Um, but for our literacy program, what we do offer is, um, one-on-one tutoring, uh, or telepresence, so to speak. And we would like to reach out to the community members to, to support us. Um, we would like to see more tutors. And we also offer, um, the ability for the learners to come and visit us. Um, we included more educational materials, um, everything from Krado to Career. Um, we have the usual, the Job Now, um, the Peterson's Educational Materials. We've also included with a few more databases, um, including Lynda, which, uh, so to speak, links people into LinkedIn so they can get certifications, licenses, and posted on LinkedIn. Um, we offer GED and TOEFL materials, um, reading, writing, spelling materials. And, uh, we have Mango, which I think I've mentioned before, but it's an online, um, database, our training materials. Uh, it's audio visual and people can learn English or they can learn other languages. We offer assistance for homework help and adult testing and educational ref, reference center. And we also offer job coaching, um, resume services, and job search abilities. We have digital libraries through Overdrive, our subscription, and people can, um, check out eBooks, e-audiobooks, magazines, and more. So I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have, but that's the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Didn't you, uh, do some drive-up checkout too?
We had self, um, yeah, we had it, we called it to-go services.
Okay.
We still offer it for those that would prefer. Uh, we have, even for families, we have the Read Crates. It's been so successful, we ran out of crates, but we will still offer those programs, um, and including our children's programs, we offer those online, um, and through our Zoom meetings.
So if, uh, so if someone checks out a book, I'm assuming there's an online process, they can pull up and someone will come out and bring it to them and?
Yes, we have a catalog that's online. Um, they can go ahead and order it. We will pull it for them and they can just give us a call saying, I'm here in the parking lot. We will go ahead and collect it up and they can collect it at the front.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other, any other questions?
Thanks.
Okay, good to see you again, Mr. Sewell. Um, we, well, we still have a couple more speakers, I think, that are online. Um, I'm going to check over there with IT folks, either Jeff Little or Tom Donahue?
Uh, Jeff Little's here.
All right, Jeff, you want to go ahead?
Sure. Yeah, I'll, I'll do a quick, I'm just, uh, zooming from the garage as our, as our new, new normal. So I don't know if you can actually see me, but good to see you, Mayor and, um, council members. I, uh, posted a little something in the, in the chat if you can actually see it, but, um, yeah, just very, I'm Jeff Little. I'm the CEO of Inland Housing Solutions, uh, Inland Temporary Homes and, and, uh, we are, uh, very appreciative of our partnership with the city. Many years standing, we're thriving, uh, in Heritage Park and, uh, doing good work. We never shut our doors during the pandemic. Obviously, we've changed operations and how we do things. But, um, yeah, doing well. Uh, we, uh, just some quick numbers. We prevented, we call it diversion or eviction prevention, 199 individuals this past year. 65 families, 98 adults, and 101 children. And then through rapid rehousing, we actually housed, um, 40 literal, uh, household, uh, literal homeless households, 63 adults and 77 children for 140 individuals. So a total of, I believe that's 339 total served. So still doing good work, never shut our doors. We really appreciate all the support from the city. And, um, and then I, I threw a little something in the chat as well. Um, but that's all I have. If you have any questions for me, I would be, uh, more than happy to answer them. If you have any questions for me, I would be more than happy to answer them.
How's how's your landlord over there at Heritage Park?
Our landlord's been good. I see Jarv on occasion, and yeah, he's, they're they're doing good work. I I've enjoyed, we love it over there, the facility, the building. Yeah, fantastic place to work, beautiful views when it snows in the mountains. And they're they're working hard on that third house in the back. So, but yeah, no complaints here.
Okay, thank you.
Do you primarily serve Loma Linda or is it throughout the inland empire?
We we serve, it's a great question. So we serve San Bernardino County. Now, of course, when we have contracts with particular city governments, like City of Loma Linda, City of Redlands, those funds are only allowed to serve residents in that city. So of course, you know, this particular grant, ten thousand, only goes to serve residents of of Loma Linda, of course. But the good thing is, you know, our our budget was well over a million dollars this past year. And so, you know, ten thousand may not be a whole lot in the grand scheme of things, but it does allow us, it it we use it as match and as leverage to be able to do bigger, you know, bigger projects, serve more individuals. So I'm not sure who asked that question, but it was a very good question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Jeff, good to see you. Thank you again for coming out. And is Tom on the line or no? Okay, Tom, go ahead.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of council and staff. My name is Tom Donahue. I'm the program administrator for the Senior Nutrition Program for Family Services Association. We've been proud to serve the community of Loma Linda for the past eight years. But what a difference years made. I used to be a lot taller, my hair was darker, and I didn't have a beard. But what is, we have changed due to the COVID crisis is we had to adapt our program to going from serving in the senior center to be able to serve the meals in a more safe environment. So we worked with our partner, with the Department of Aging and Adult Services of the county. And they agreed, and we talked with the city, to do a drive-through meal distribution program. What that means is that the seniors will line up, stay in their cars, that we will provide five pros of meals for each senior that comes through the program. We serve in the city of Loma Linda about sixty people in total on a regular basis. It's about twenty people in the homebound delivery meal program, about forty that come through the drive. The big big change in our program is when we were offered at a senior center, our primary focus was to help address isolation of seniors, bring them to the senior center. The meal's kind of a hook to bring them there, and then the program and other services really help to get them engaged with other residents. Now, as they isolate due to the COVID restrictions, the food insecurity is the biggest issue that we're coming against. Last year, we served about seventy-five hundred meals, or over fourteen thousand meals projected to serve for this fiscal year.
Wow.
We do not see too many changes for our program coming up for the next, till the end of this calendar year, through the end of June. We are in discussion with Department of Aging to see what happens once more people get vaccinated through the through the summer and to see what restrictions will be loosened up by the state, particularly the California Department of Aging. So we're not sure when we're gonna be returning to cooking at the center. We anticipate based on the current scenario that it will be after the first of a calendar year. But we're looking forward to continuing our program with, in partnership with the city of Loma Linda. The ten thousand dollars that you provide for us helps us offset our food costs and our staffing costs for our particular program. You're one of eighteen communities we serve in San Bernardino County. And we also serve in Riverside County in ten different communities throughout throughout the county. And as Jeff mentioned, when you have CDBG money, that money stays here in the city of Loma Linda for your residents. One of the great things that Jarv and Lynette have asked us to do is to, can we produce meals that might be a little more healthier? So we've been working with our vendor for this past year, and we're looking for some new options to introduce. And we'll probably start with Loma Linda as one of the few sites that we have that had a vegetarian meal before we started the COVID program. And we think that'll be coming up in the next thirty days. So we're looking forward to this next fiscal year to continue to be a partner with you. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about our program and partnership.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to add one thing, that last month, I had the opportunity to personally deliver the food myself to, like Tom said, twenty seniors in town here. And all the seniors are pretty appreciative of our work, and we delivered to to the house and thanked you me, I don't know how many times. And the reason I did it because both of my staff had COVID last month, so I get to do it. So again, thank you, Tom, for your services and and your staff, too. So they've been they've been doing great. So thank you.
It's my pleasure. We've had similar situations, and I've been delivering those meals to your site for the last two months due to a similar situation. So we understand the flexibility we all need to have, so I was glad to get that kind of feedback. Thank you.
Hey, Tom, if, kind of on a side note, if if you remember and drop me an email, or if I remember, I'll try to send you one and maybe connect you. I might have some options to help you with some of those healthy meal choices. There's there's some groups out there that are interested in some of that stuff, so. But yeah, let's let's connect offline.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Is my contact information in the chat?
You know, we we don't have it up. We used, we've gone through a couple iterations. We used to have laptops up here. And I have mine, but I'm not signed on, so I didn't I didn't see any of the chat.
It's an email.
Oh, okay.
So. Okay, with that being said, we'll turn it over to the council for discussion or a motion. Yeah, first and a second, Madam Clerk.
Okay, and the motion is to approve, as outlined in the staff report, the public service projects and construction improvement projects and fund allocations for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two CDBG program. Councilman Jindal, Councilman Leonard.
Yes.
And Mayor Duper.
Yes.
And it passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number three, which is also a public hearing on our fall weed abatement program.
Good evening, council staff and citizens. My name is Tom Ingles, Fire Marshal of City of Loma Linda. I'm here to give a little background analysis on the Fall 2020 Weed Abatement Program. This is a biannual weed abatement program we do to keep down the weeds and the fire hazard within the city. The Fall 2020 Weed Abatement Program started on September twenty eighth, twenty twenty. We did an initial inspection of about four hundred and thirty-five parcels. October thirteenth, they were given notice to clean property to the owner on record through the county assessor's office. Four letters were returned. So with those letters that were returned, we posted on the property the notice, hoping that the property owner would see it. Let's see here. We did follow-up inspections on October twenty eighth. If the abatement had not been done, or if the citizen didn't call us to request a time extension, we gave extra time this this season due to COVID and people, you know, getting, making their own arrangements to come out and clear their property. So we had quite a few people call to make arrangements for an extension. After the extension and going and doing our follow-up inspection, we had about twenty parcels that still were not abated. So our contractor went on and did those. We sent out notices or the invoices for payment for the services rendered by the contractor on January fourth. And then they were given until today at five to pay for those for the services rendered by the contractor. We have an update to Exhibit C that you guys have in front of you. We only have four outstanding invoices that need to be paid, so we did really well this year on getting it paid. So with that being said, it's recommended that the city council receive the report of the Fall 2020 Weed Abatement Program, approve the report in accounting of costs, and adopt the company resolution establishing liens and assessments on the properties.
We'll tack on the Lewis Cost to their new project they just submitted plans for. Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody wishes to speak on this item, please signal via chat or whatever motion. I see no one. Any comment or dialogue from the council? If not, who will entertain a motion to accept this report? Madam Clerk?
And the motion is to adopt Council Bill Number R dash twenty-one dash zero three, receive the report of the Fall Weed Abatement Program and establishing liens and assessments on those properties with outstanding invoices. Councilman Jindal?
Aye.
Councilman Leonard?
Yes.
And Mayor Duper?
Yes.
It passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the consent calendar.
I'll move it.
I have a few questions on a few items.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay.
Sorry.
For the Treasury's report, item number six. A quick question on that one. When do we expect to be at back to normal standards? So I see that we're on the third page. Ending December, our cash flow was still under what it's been in the past. When do we expect to be at that level again?
What do you mean by that? I mean, is it cash flow? So?
Sorry, total cash available.
Okay, so as as you, let let me start, Diana, and then you can can follow. Okay, go ahead.
It may not get there because it includes all the city, which we have some capital projects funds that are meant to be spent, and they they are large dollar amounts. So you may have projects in special projects that are street improvements or we're purchasing the fire truck or in in the bond capital fund, which is for street improvements as well. So once those dollars go out, if there's no other additional revenue source, you're not gonna see it come back up. So that's that's the nature of the capital projects funds. So normal cash flow is 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 down because we are seeing a reduction in sales tax. But as far as, and then some, we're seeing business license is still kind of lower than we anticipated. And but like was explained in the audit session, at the beginning of the year, we are putting more cash out because we aren't seeing the revenues come in. We normally get regular sales tax, but sales tax is down. And then with the COVID, the state offered a deferral to larger agencies. So the big tax producers for us were offered a deferral. So we'll see that money eventually, but until they are obligated to make the payments, we will see a reduced cash. And then when we start seeing property taxes is in November, so that's when we start seeing. But then we also, at that point, we start seeing our debt service payments come due, which are on the bonds. So we see large million-dollar payments going out, so. So it's a fluctuation, but the key is on some of the bigger items, the capital items. Unless there's some other revenue coming in, we may see some development dollars come in for capital developments. But for the bonds, we're not gonna see that money. Once we spend it, that's that's gone. And then for, sometimes we do get some one-time grants. We're getting SB one money and then the Measure I, there's a Measure I for circulation improvements. So we may see those one-time fundings for certain projects. But again, at this point, we may not see it come all the way back up to what you referred to as normal.
I have a question. How is our TOT looked, given the contracts that some of the hotels went into with the state? Did they still pay TOT, or was that bypassed?
Actually, we, when we did the budget, we were anticipating TOT to be reduced because, okay, hospitality and we're actually, in the mid-year, we're gonna actually increase it because they are doing fairly well. And we're, they also have an economic incentive attached to it, so we're increasing that as well.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, next question is related to the Fire Department report. For the vegetation fire, I see that we had four this month. What is that?
Yeah, like I mentioned in the last council meeting to Councilman Daley. So these numbers, when a call comes in, they're assigned a a call designation. And that designation can be quite broad, and these these categories then capture kind of the broader category than being more specific. And so, you know, we could break down a report that really gets into detail, such as, you know, Councilman Daley last time was asking about structure fires, and we could, we could nail that down really, really well and figure out. But you know, to try to keep the report a little bit more concise, you know, we just kind of do broad categories. And one of those, such as, would be vegetation. And so vegetation would be a myriad of things. I mean, you could go anywhere from, you know, a super large week-long fire, which obviously we haven't had that because we'd all know, to just a small, kind of a nuisance fire, could be just, you know, a ten-by-ten spot in some brush or grass. So to know exactly what those were, I'd have to go through all the reports and figure out what they were. But my guess would be, since we haven't had any major responses, it was probably something small like that that just started some grass on fire, fell under that broad category.
Thank you. My purpose for asking was to see if there's something that the city council or the city can do in general to reduce the number of vegetation fires? Because just reading it, it sounds like it's normal grass, right, just catching on fire?
Yeah, and and I think, you know, obviously, you know, that weed abatement goes a long way towards at least maintaining them smaller. That's kind of one of the whole driving factors behind that is in order to, you know, if something catches, it doesn't catch. You know, huge fields of weeds and brush on fire, and that's kind of the design behind that. So that goes a long ways towards it, what we're already doing. Some of these, you know, if if they got big, you know, I could probably come with probably some examples. But if they're small, those are just gonna happen, and we're just gonna get little things that can get sparked, discarded material, some maybe intentionally set and stuff like that. We'll get those, we'll probably never stop getting those. But I would say if we were getting large ones, that's where we'd probably be more concerned and need to find answers. And and I would say comfortably right now, we're not in that position. So I appreciate it. I definitely keep that in mind. If we do have that, definitely bring back some requests from the council. Thank you.
One last question on item ten A. Yes? So for this one, I understand that we already have solar panels at this location. Since we're installing a CO Academy, does it make any sense to install solar panels on that and provide the energy created by them to nearby locations?
No, the way Edison, we did try to ask Edison. No, the way Edison, we did try to ask Edison for that. The way solar system work is, we can only use it for the facility. So right now, we already, the solar panel that we have at the city yard already met the requirement for over there. So.
100% covered already?
No, no, not 100%, but they only allow so much. So, yes, I did try. So.
All right, that fit from my end.
Okay. Dr. Leonard? All right, we did have a motion. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we'll call.
The motion is to adopt the items on the City Council Consent Calendar. Councilman Jendal? Councilman Leonard?
Yes.
And Mayor Duper?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for that. Back into old business, Council Bill O-2021-01, which would be the second reading and roll call vote to repeal the East Valley Corridor Specific Plan and Specific Plan Amendment.
The ordinance was introduced at the last meeting in January. It, since the adoption of the East Valley Corridor Specific Plan in 1989, significant land areas included in the corridor have been approved, improved, excuse me, and as a result, there's no longer a need for the special development standards in that area. Development can be managed with appropriate updates to the Land Use Development Code. Repealing the East Valley Corridor Specific Plan also makes it easier for staff to manage new development proposals. And we held the public hearing back in January.
Yes, and if I recall, I believe Dr. Leonard made a singular motion to handle all four items. Was that still appropriate?
An ordinance is, I would recommend that you handle those separately.
Okay. Are there any questions for staff? We covered in pretty deeply last time, so if there are any questions, I'm here to answer them. All right, I guess we'll take a motion as they come.
Okay, I'll move it. I'm not quite sure. I always get confused with the wording of this, but are we, am I moving that we're waiving the reading of the Council Bill and directing the clerk to read by title only, and then we can adopt a voice vote?
Yes, she's nodding yes affirmatively. So yes.
I can't believe it. All right. That's my motion.
You may begin.
Oh, well, let's hit the rewind. Let's go back.
I'm not doing it again. I didn't make a mistake. I know.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for Council Bill O-2021-01.
The ordinance is entitled, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, repealing the East Valley Corridor Specific Plan, Specific Plan Amendment Number P-20-142. And being that we are socially distanced and cannot use the voting board, we'll just take a roll call vote. Councilman Jendal?
Yes.
Councilman Leonard?
Aye.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
And Mayor Duper?
Yes, ma'am.
And it passes. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number 12 in this list of four. We'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll move that. I'm going to roll. City Council waived reading of Council Bill 020-2021-02 in its entirety, and have the clerk read by title only.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. The ordinance is entitled, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, amending the official zoning map of the City of Loma Linda, Zone Map Amendment Number P-20-140. Councilman Jendal?
Yes.
Councilman Leonard?
Aye.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
And Mayor Duper?
Yes.
And it passes. Thank you.
Okay, looking for the same thing on item number 13.
Keep going with it. Okay. I'd make a motion that we, City Council waived reading of Council Bill 021-2021-03 in its entirety, and have the clerk read by title only.
Second.
Thank you. It is entitled, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, amending certain titles and sections of the Loma Linda Municipal Code, Development Code Amendment Number P-20-058. Councilman Jendal?
Aye.
Councilman Leonard?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
And Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Thank you.
Fourth time's the charm.
All right, I'll move that the City Council waived reading of Council Bills 0-2021-04 in its entirety, and direct their clerk to read by title only.
Second.
Do you have a question? No, yeah, there was a question.
Okay, so a question for this one. Would it be proper to make an alternative motion to include another aspect at this time?
What's your thought?
So a lot of our other committees have a four-year term. Listening to some of the comments that were made last time around, it seems that the Historical Commission in particular is not meeting quorum due to the fact that a lot of members are not attending. And because they have a, basically a lifetime term, my thought was that we would include, along with this, a move to include a four-year term for the Historical Commission to make it aligned with our other committees.
An amendment to the ordinance at this stage would require a new first reading. So that amendment could not be included with a final vote tonight, but you could make the motion, and that could be considered as a new first reading, and then we would come back at the next meeting for the second reading.
All right, so I'd like to move that.
Can we pass the one we have?
Yeah, I think we need to pass the one we have as it is, but I don't think the new thing you're introducing would conflict with that, and I'm open to presenting that.
Yeah, I think it needs to be fleshed out a little bit with the staggered terms and whatnot. You don't want the whole historical commission having no history.
Right. So what I think we could do with that is we could direct staff to bring that back as an option for discussion next council meeting?
That would be a brand-new amendment to the municipal code to make that change, if you wish to pursue that.
Right. I think we should bring it back for discussion, yet not necessarily. Unless you want to discuss it right now.
Well, can we proceed with the vote on this, and then maybe talk about it under, if it's not agendized, can we discuss it?
That would fall within the current agenda topic, which is the amendment to the Historic Commission membership and the ordinance related thereto. So you could certainly discuss that. You just couldn't take a final action to approve that because it would be a substantive change that was not considered at the previous hearing.
So, technical question. If, so we do have a first and a second, and if we call for the vote, and we vote, and we close out that item on the agenda, can we still discuss it?
Yes, it's still on the agenda, but you could discuss it before the vote as well.
Well, would you guys like to talk about it now, or get some information or research and talk about it at another council meeting?
I think including it, I think Dr. Rigsby had some reservations, so I'd like to hear just what do you mean by fleshing it out?
Well, staggered votes, I mean staggered terms. You want to have, you know, some people get a two-year term, and others get a four-year term. And then when the two-year comes up for renewal, they get four years. But you don't want to give everybody four years on day one, because then the entire thing expires on the same date. You want to have some continuity on the Historical Commission of all commissions. So I don't have any problem with terms. I thought it had terms, so I don't have any problem with that. It just needs to be, we just need to make it official, and then somebody's going to have to decide who gets the two-year term, who gets the four-year term, that kind of stuff. That's what I mean by fleshing it out. It's kind of bare bones. Now it needs flesh.
Do we need a motion to direct staff to research this?
I think you just give direction. I don't know that we need a motion.
Cool. So we can continue discussion next time around?
Okay, so we have a first and a second. Let's go ahead and call for the vote.
Okay, and just confirming, the first was by Councilman Leonard, and the second by
Dr. Rigsby?
Okay. And the motion is to adopt Council Bill Number O-2021-04, entitled, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, amending the Loma Linda Municipal Code, Chapter 17.80 pertaining to Historical Commission Membership. Councilman Jendal?
Yes.
Councilman Leonard?
Aye.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
And Mayor Duper?
Yes.
And it passes. Thank you.
Okay, new business. We're going to have a joint meeting with the City Council and the Housing Authority regarding our mid-year budget review. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, I would like Diana to present our mid-year budget, please, and I will summarize it, and.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and public audience. This is our mid-year audit, mid-year budget review. Sorry. And this year, we did a quick budget review, just kind of assessing where our revenues were, and where our potential expenditures, what we might need to finish out the year. So this will present just a brief overview of what we're seeing as far as the revenues coming in, and then the expenditures that we anticipate needing to the rest of the year. So for the general fund revenues, these are the changes we are proposing. Property taxes, we're seeing property taxes coming a little higher, and these mainly are regarding the successor agency pass-throughs that we get through, as far as any pass-throughs that have previously been negotiated, and then the residual receipts that are being, as a taxing entity, the city will get residual receipts from the successor agency. So that has to go through the formal ROPS process, and then whatever's left over. Once the obligated debt is met, then we get as a residual receipt. Franchise tax, we're seeing a slight increase of $18,000, and that's mainly through our refuse franchise that we're seeing that. Sales tax, we are projecting a decrease in sales tax, and we get these projections through our consultant, which is HDL, and so we adjusted our budget to what they anticipate based upon our demographics and the sales tax-producing vendors we have. We're also adjusting our economic incentives for those sales tax that we have associated with sales tax receipts. TOT tax, as mentioned before, we are seeing an increase in TOT tax, which is a good thing. And so we are increasing what's called the TOT abatement, which is attached to the economic incentive. Other taxes, we are seeing just miscellaneous taxes and property transfers. We have a lot of new developments and houses being sold, so we are seeing an increase in the property transfer tax. Licenses and permits, we are seeing our building permits. We are having quite a bit of building activity going on within the city, so we are seeing an increase in building and fire plan checks. Our reduction in our fines, apparently mainly due to animal fines. So we are adjusting the use of money in property down significantly because we are seeing a reduction in revenue rates, and with the facilities being closed, our lease income and our facility rentals are down as well. So intergovernmental, we are seeing an increase in intergovernmental due to trends, well, this comes mainly from our other governmental agencies that pass through to us, and we are seeing an increase in our federal grants, so that's coming into the city. Charges for services, that's related. Mainly, we're seeing an increase in engineering, plan checks, planning fees, and our refuse charges in the general fund. And then others, other charges, we are seeing, this is related to the reimbursements we receive for fire activity, for strike teams that are going out, and with COVID, workers' comp reimbursements that we are receiving for firefighters that are out on the COVID. Then transfers in, we are increasing transfers in. We received some federal grants as far as the CARES Acts, and so we receive them into a grant fund, and then we transfer them in to cover the reimbursement of fire personnel charges, and then also some purchasing of PPE, some computers that we use for telework that when we had staff off on different shifts. So some of those transfers in are for those CARES Act-related expenses. So in total, we are anticipating an increase in general fund revenues of $1.7 million. Go to the next slide. Sorry. For our enterprise funds, we are also increasing our sewer, sewer. And I just want to preface, in most categories, we are going to see changes in the use of property and money in property, which is interest revenue and any use of facilities. And then we'll be seeing federal grant money coming into most funds that have personnel in them for, we are getting tax credits for the leave that personnel has had to take due to the COVID activity. So you'll see federal grants, and then changes in use of money in most of the funds. So those are here in the sewer fund. And then charges for services, we are seeing an increase in consumption rate, consumption throughout the water and the sewer. So we're seeing an increase in charges for services in those two funds. And then other, we closed out some funds that we had sitting out there, so you'll see some trends. These are related to either closing out of other funds into these activities. So that's what this other revenue is. So in sewer fund, we are increasing $180,000. And then for just the LLCPC, which is our fiber optic internet, we're seeing a slight increase of $1,400. Water fund, we're seeing, again, a reduction in use of money in property, and then federal grant coming in, and then the charges for services, again, due to consumption and water usage. And then other, as far as just a reduction in, like, just an increase in reimbursements and the closing out of other funds. And all other funds, we're just seeing other enterprise capital, and then the capital projects funds, you're seeing a significant decrease, and that's mainly due to building activity, development impact fees that we collect on building activity, which usually come in at a later date. And then special revenue, you're seeing an increase, we are seeing an increase in gas tax revenue. And then the significant increases in grants due to the COVID grants we received. We have a total of, with the grants and the credits for. We have a total of, with the grants and the credits for personnel, we're seeing about a $750,000 COVID relief funding that we are receiving. And then housing, just a reduction due to interest rates. So overall, the city, we are anticipating a $2.4 million increase in overall revenues. Now, we're going to discuss expenditures. Went through, and you, you have attached to the staff report, you have schedules which go into further details. But across the board and across the city, we'll have charges for IS, which is related to the network. So we had some security software that we purchased and some network upgrades that we did. As we moved to remote services, we increased those two to accommodate the customers. So those are spread across the board. In administration, we also have some, some leave payout for a retiring person. Then we have, we're including about $20,000 for COVID relief supplies. As you may notice, we installed barriers on the counter. So we're asking for some money for those barriers. We are reducing in our senior centers as the closure of the senior center due to the COVID activity, that we're reducing for utilities and repairs and maintenance and some contractual services, about $17,000. So that all falls into administration. So there is an increase of $36,000 for administration. Then general and community development, you have the infrastructure for the IS department, some COVID expenses, which are the increase for the $6,200. Fire is the highest increase you'll see of the $817,000. And again, that is for personnel overtime for the fire strike teams and the overtime to cover personnel that was out on COVID leave. And, and just, I believe there were some vacancies that were also needing to cover as well. And then we have for public works, we are requesting some increases for some field overtime, some sidewalk and concrete repair and tree tribbing removal, some utility costs for the city parks, and then some increases for park irrigation and playground equipment replacement. And across the board for the internet stuff. So, so we're, we're asking for the $149,000 for the, for those increases. The total general fund increases are the $1,010,000.
Could you add $1 and make it a palindrome? Add $1 and make the total a palindrome.
Now, we have other expenditures that we are requesting for the enterprise funds, the sewer funds, and, and then the water funds. The main one in the water fund is for overtime charges. The smaller charges are for the infrastructure, the network infrastructure that we are requesting, that goes across the boards. We are seeing in special revenues, where, as mentioned before, we're seeing an increase in the gas tax, which gets transferred into the general fund. And then for the Housing Authority, we are requesting an increase of the $980,000 for the Mary Erickson Project that Council had approved. And we are appropriating the funds with this action. So citywide, we are increasing expenditures by the $2,075,100. In these summary sheets, basically, we just do the comparison of the revenues we are requesting to the expenditures we are requesting. So this just shows the net effect that it's going to have on the fund balance. So in the general fund, the request of $1.7 million in revenues offsetted by, I mean, the revenues against your expenditures yields the increase in the fund balance of $7,000, $731,400, sorry. And enterprise funds, again, we are seeing higher increase in, in service charges. So against the expenditures, so we're anticipating an increase of $1.3 million in overall enterprise funds. And then again, revenues, we are seeing the decreases due to the development impact activities in the overall, the enterprise capital funds. The special revenues are increasing, again, gas tax, the grants we're receiving, and then the capital projects reduction. So in just increasing the special revenues, the expenditure, which is the transfer out to the general fund. And then in the Housing Authority, the almost $1 million for the Mary Erickson Project. So overall, we're asking, we're increasing the revenues by $2.4 million and we're asking for expenditures of $2 million, which will yield the $378,746 in just the, these mid-year requests. These summary sheets then are the bigger picture, which shows what we started the year with, the originally adopted budget, any increases or decreases that we came throughout the year, and then the impact of the mid-year as well. So we are anticipating an increase to the general fund, unassigned fund balance. If you want to move forward, no changes to any of the reserves. Again, the increases to most of the enterprise funds. And then the capital funds, we're going to be decreasing for expenditures overall. Then if you want to go to one more slide. Then overall, as a city, we're going from $38.3 million to $39 million for all the activities that we had proposed. So in this, the recommendation is to have, for staff, is for the approval of the net increase in revenues of $2.4 million and the net increase in appropriations of $2 million as presented in the summary sheets attached. So we're asking for Council's approval on those two items.
So in summary, if you remember, when we start off this fiscal year budget, we start off, for the general fund, we start off with a negative $563,000 in negative. And so come at, at mid-year budget, we are looking at, in the budget, with a positive of $117,000. So again, this is only a mid-year. And then one thing with the enterprise fund, this past year, due to COVID-19, when people laid on paying the water bill or sewer bill, we cannot turn off their water. So right now, our account receivable for, for utility is about $140,000. And it's not show on here, but it's in the book.
In the red, I'm sorry?
Yeah, there's, there's many people haven't paid us, account receivable. So, so now, hopefully, they will pay us back when, when the governor allows us to collect. But right now, we are, we're not, if you don't turn, we don't turn off water and...
Are we going to repossess their sewage?
So again, we are looking at potential loss, so, but just wanted to point out.
Those will be uncollectibles that probably, you know, either, due to the moratorium placed on us, we cannot assess any fines or late fees and we cannot shut off water.
So when those, when those people fail to pay, they're not just failing to pay the water bill, they're failing to pay the trash bill also.
Correct. If they don't pay any of their...
So we're needing that too, and that's separate, or is that included in that 150 grand?
The, the number jar quoted was just water.
Be interesting.
If they're non-paying trash, do we pass the non-payment on to the CRNR?
Correct.
So will CRNR stop collecting trash because there's no mandate from the governor about...
They'll just bypass that house.
No, and they might. That, that could actually explain a couple of the complaints we've had.
So the revenue increase in water, what was that again? So the $1.221 million?
People at home.
Most of that was due to customer service charges for water, so water sales. And we, we anticipate that is due to people being home and using more water and probably watering their lawns more and maintaining their yards.
Wish in turn that we don't meet the, the water conservation numbers, so.
So just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, we had an increase in revenue of $1.2 million despite the fact that we have about $140,000 that are, that we haven't collected yet.
Potential uncollectibles.
Well, is, is this revenue based on cash receipts or revenue based on billing?
Billing.
So it's, you'd have to subtract the 140. Now, my question is, after the COVID restrictions are off, can we attach this to any, can we do like what we do with the fire?
We do have, in normal operations, we do have a collection agency that we submit these bills to and they proceed with the collection efforts.
But is it, do you, do you guess that when the COVID restrictions are off, we can take the old bills, or are the old bills just not touchable? So when, let's say a year from now, the restrictions are off, you can now take people to collections. Can we take them to collections for the stuff they didn't pay during the COVID restrictions?
Yes.
Or are those off limits?
No.
Okay, good. Then we don't really care because time value of money has no multiplier on it.
Correct. The moratorium, it is only on, you can't shut them off right now and you can't assess any fines or late charges to their bill. And so, and, but we do, can't take them, if they shut off their water, we do advise them, you know, eventually you're going to have to pay this bill. So, and, and we do try to, the ladies do try to make it clear that eventually these bills are going to come due. So if there's a potential for you to make any kind of payment, we encourage it.
What's the breakdown between residential and business?
I don't have that number.
Is anyone in this room a scofflaw?
But I can, I can tell you that probably no, at least the big commercial ones, they pay their bills.
So on the opposite end of that, we could also just forgive the dead too, right?
We don't, we don't...
Not, not right now.
We don't, we don't forgive people mowing their weeds. I don't think...
You're going to try on a one to four vote.
That's a lot of money. Okay, anything else? Any other questions? Diana, thank you, as always. Is this just an accept and file, or do we need a emotional, because, because we have an adjustment?
I'll move it. Do I have to say everything?
I don't think so. Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Okay, and the motion is to approve the net increases to revenues of $200,453,846 and a net increase to appropriations of $2,075,100 as presented. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Leonard?
Aye.
Councilman Riggsby?
Yes.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
And it passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to reports of council members.
I'll start. So since our last meeting, we had a meeting for the Advisory Commission on Water Policy and then also the SBCTA meeting. A few highlights from the Advisory Commission on Water Policy. So the precipitation average for 2019 to 2020 was lower than the historic average. Up to December 2020 for this year, we were at 4.09 inches, which is lower than average as well. So not a good trend there. And then the October to September is when they have their year. We were below average and we're still in the 21-year drought. One factoid that I found interesting, we have about 50 years of water left if present weather and climate conditions persist. After that, we're going to start getting desperate and take some extreme measures to get, get water for our residents and our community. For SBCTA, I'll let Dr. Riggsby talk about this a little more. But the Board accepted the Boring Company Statement of Qualification, so they're going to be moving ahead.
What was boring about them? I'm sorry, I couldn't resist.
They were the only one that applied. So they are, we are looking to get a tunnel built from the Ontario Airport to Ranji Kukamunga. So they're going to proceed with a request for proposals.
Isn't that a Musk, Elon Musk enterprise?
Yeah, he owns something like 80% of it himself. He's not rich enough. He needs more. But it's a, it's a shockingly inexpensive way to get transit built, shockingly inexpensive, compared to prior things. And I still can't comprehend why. I don't know how you can just suddenly come along and dig a, you know, basically a mole tunnel and do it so cheaply. But hey, we'll take advantage of it.
Could, could that be an option for the high-speed rail, or are we foregone with that one?
Who knows? I'm sure Elon Musk has all kinds of things planned. He's, he's, he's in the sky and the space, on the highways, under, underground. He's everywhere you want to be.
And now, and now a resident of Texas.
Yeah, but he paid a whole lot of money for it. And the problem with Bitcoin, if you're thinking of investing in it, it can only do one and a half, it can only do one transaction every second and a half. So if it becomes the world currency, you're going to have to wait in line to buy your bubble gum.
Okay. Thank you for those reports. Any reports of officers?
Yeah, I got a couple of them. First, an update on the COVID status here in the city. In early January, we had, and this is countywide, just to, to show you what we've, what's gone on the last couple of weeks. Countywide, we were having 28,000 cases a week. Last week, we had 4,600. So there's been a dramatic drop in, in the caseload. Same thing with, with the deaths. The week of Christmas, there were 30 deaths per day. Countywide, right now, where there's less than one per day. And in, in the City of Loma Linda, in aggregate, we've only had 14 deaths throughout, which is, is pretty good considering the age of the population and, you know, for, for 27,000 people. There will be continued testing here at the senior center on February 15th, March 12th, and March 20th. If you go to sbcovid.com, you can get all the updates on the information and also sign up for your, your COVID testing. And actually, Loma Linda is technically 23,000 people and we have had 38,000 tests by Loma Linda residents. So as far as the community, we're doing a great job of, of testing. And hopefully, that'll translate into immunizations. We are still working with the county. It probably will not happen, but we've offered up the senior center for immunizations. They are immunizing at the Drayson Center. Recommend that you don't drive down Shepherd Center, pass that during the day. Although they've really managed, managed it well. They've got traffic control and pedestrian control, but it's just crowded there. They're doing 200 an hour, which is somewhere in, in about the 1,200 per day. So, you know, if it was only Loma Linda residents, we could get that out of the way in less than a month. So, but it is, it is a monumental operation. So, but it is, it is a monumental operation from, from that. Also, at the March 6th, March 9th city council meeting, it will be a joint meeting with the Planning Commission and open for public comment if we can be here at 6 o'clock for the discussion on the housing element. And we will have our consultant here to work on that. It's just a little sneak peek, we, we ran the initial numbers. And it does look like we, we have enough capacity where we will not need to do any rezoning to meet the how, the RENA numbers. So at least for this cycle, we're, we're okay.
And that's RENA numbers?
That's, you know, that's, that's the numbers that have, have really brutalized a lot of the, the other communities. But we've, we've managed to, to at least, at least this cycle. And looking at it, we, we may have enough access to, to sneak through one more cycle if we had to.
Can we make sure this gag people are not watching our video feed?
So that they know we don't have extra?
Yeah.
That, we, we'll block them, we'll look at Google or somebody to... And then the final thing is, the city of Colton circulated their request for comments on the preliminary environmental report for the Rancho del Prado project to the city. And we sent them our comments at about four and a half pages of reasons why we, we feel that that is not a good project and how, how it will impact the, the city of Loma Linda. And that is, that is it, thank you.
Okay, I have one report. I would like to report that tonight will be Diana, last city council meeting with us. She is retiring, starting this Thursday. So after 26 years of service to the city, Diana, I would like to thank you for your time and effort, and especially for dealing with me for the past 20 years. That's not easy, so thank you. And I would like to introduce you to our new finance director, that's Sonia. She's just presented the, the audit report. Sonia had been with the city for 20 years. And she started off as an accountant and moved her way up to the senior accountant and analyst to current position as accounting manager. So she's our, she is, she is well-trained by Diana. And I enjoy working with her, so we will keep, keep her working. And, and, and so it's, it's, it's going to be a nice and smooth transition. And then I think next week, we'll go out, do recruitment for her replacement, so. That's in my report.
Well, Diana, will you be coming back to get like a formal proclamation or something by the council? And then, you know, the whole thing with the, the historical commission, now you're on it by default, right?
At least you get rocking chair, right?
Yeah, she gets, I think she gets a rocking chair.
She'll get, she'll get a lamp.
A lamp.
Oh, the lamp.
We've invited her back to the, to the March 9 meeting for a more formal send-off.
What's the rocking chair, is that 30?
The rocking chair in the past has only been to retiring council members.
That's waste. Employees are way more valuable than council members. It, it's like our natural rocking chair has, has been given away as a, as a gift and a lamp. What are some of the other things?
I like, I like retiring from sandbag because you get a bag of sand.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
I do have a couple of things, excuse me, that I should have had under public comment that I, I neglected, I'm sorry. I do believe I forwarded to all of the council members a public comment from a gentleman named Jonathan Hawes, a former employee of the city of El Monte. He went on about some embezzlement, alleged embezzlement in El Monte and was just asking the Loma Linda City Council to call out these crimes to protect the vulnerable residents of one of the poorest cities in California. And then I have another one from late this afternoon, from Mr. Joe Frank. He wanted to thank the city for having the adobe roof covered for added protection. This will go a long way in protecting the interior and superstructure from any further damage. He is also suggesting adding two steel security doors with deadlock, dead, with key lock dead bolts, one on the front and the other on the west side. And then he was also asking that the city and developer consider giving him a key and allowing him to help with the restoration planning for the adobe and would sign a release of liability if the city wanted him to do that. But I will forward that to Jarb, and if that's...
Again, we already sold that property, but with the High Point, at least, we may not do...
We have a license agreement to give city employees access to the property for maintenance and security tasks.
Ult, ultimately... Right, ultimately, the property will be coming back to us in the form of park space at some point. Okay, so that will adjourn the city council meeting. We are already in the housing authority, so. We'll continue with that. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
And we just have the consent calendar.
Move it.
First? A second? Madam Clerk?
And the motion is to approve the items on the housing authority consent calendar. Councilman Jindal? Councilman Leonard? Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
And it passes, thank you.
Thank you, we have no more items to be discussed in that agenda. Any new business, chair member reports, reports of officers? Seeing none, we'll adjourn that and we'll open the successor agency. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
All we have is a consent calendar. Second? I'm sorry, do we have a second? I jumped that one a little bit. Yes, I think the nod was a second, yes. It's like, it's like, what do you call it, an auction? Okay.
The motion is to approve the items on the successor agency consent calendar. Councilman Jindal? Councilman Leonard? Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
And Mayor Duper?
Yes.
And it passes, thank you.
Thank you, and that concludes all of our meetings.